I just wanted to give the two aldermen close by and the Cook County Commissioner, who has got a lot to do with the tax rebate, a chance to say a couple of words. So, Millie?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for coming out to this very important meeting. I am delighted to see you, all of you, to see all of you here. Obviously, you got the flyer, you get the information somehow. So, how did you find out?
I could act.
Word of mouth? Oh, that works too.
Nice to talk. Flyer though.
Good. Well, you know, it's been, you know, 62,000 people to cover. It's a lot of people. But I'm glad that you're here. This is a very important day for the residents of the 31st Ward and for myself as the new alderman, because this is my very first community meeting. And this, thank you. I know that many of you have the greatest stories about this building, from Olson Rocks to Marshall Fields Warehouse, then Macy's, then it got vacant for about eight to 10 years, I believe. And a lot of people have been asking, what's coming here? I wonder what the future of this huge land is. Well, today, we are going to be able to answer all those questions, because a very good project is coming, and it is for real. During my campaign, one of the things that I advocated for was for public input, community participation, and to keep the residents informed when something like this would be coming to the ward. Well, today, I am keeping my promise. Even though a great part of the project is already an ongoing project from my predecessor, one of the first people that I got to meet when I was officially the alderman was, as a matter of fact, with these three gentlemen here. We had a meeting about the project, because as a resident myself, I didn't know much about the project. So, I got to meet with them, and I tell you, what's coming here is a dream come true for the residents, not only for the 31st Ward, but for the northwest side as well. So, Alderman Reboiras, we're going to have something good coming. I'm so glad to see the state representatives here and Commissioner Royal as well, because he also shares a great part of this project. So, we are going to have a brief presentation of what the project is about, and then after the presentation, the PowerPoint of the project, we're going to be open for questions and answers. Thank you very much again.
Alderman Reboiras, did you have a couple of words you wanted to say?
Just want to say hi and thank you for having me here on behalf of our colleague that's here and the gentlemen that are here that, you know, if you get Lou Silver involved and you have a facility, he gets things done. And I've seen that for 25 years. But the fact that you have a role, the community has an input, that's very important. She's keeping her promise, and I think that's wonderful on the alderman's behalf. The fact that we have a beautiful building like this, and we're going to make it work with the community input, says a lot for what she wants to do in our community, and I support that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out here, for being here. This is just a brief opportunity of what you're going to see to come from our newly-elected alderman and the other elected officials, is more of the input from the community. This is something that you're going to see more of, not only from her, but the other elected officials and from my office as well. Thank you to the three gentlemen here. Thank you to the prior owners of the Macy's building. You have a very nice project that is going to be put forth here in this building, and a lot of what's going to happen, the do's and don'ts, are going to come from this community. And most importantly, the jobs that it's going to bring to this area are going to come from the community, whether it be from people in this room, some of our children, some of our grandchildren. The work that is going to be brought here is going to stay here. Thank you.
Welcome. First and most importantly, I want to thank the state representatives, the commissioner, the aldermen that have taken their time to come out this evening. We've had the opportunity over the last few months to meet actually with all of them. And one of the aspects about this project that's very important to us is to engage the community. You know, Alderman Santiago has been very involved immediately from the first day that she was in office, and we're very grateful for that, and we appreciate that. I'm sure many of you have a lot of questions, and we are planning on providing more than enough time to answer those questions. What I'd like to do is go through this presentation. Hopefully, you can hold your questions until I complete the presentation, and then we'll immediately be able to answer all of those questions. With that said, before I start, I want to make sure that if there's any questions that wanted to be asked by the alderman or commissioner, wonderful. My name is Paul Fishbein. I'm a partner with 4K Diversity Partners, which is the owner of this project. My other two partners is Lou Silver, who is the owner of Studio 41 and Climate Guard Windows, and Aaron Paris. As many of you may be aware, we acquired this property from Macy's in January of 2014, and we embarked upon a redevelopment of this project. We worked with the aldermen and the city of Chicago and the Planning Department to come up with a plan that worked for the neighborhood, worked for the city, and would be financially successful. And we feel that what we're going to show you today can achieve exactly that. Before we dive into some of the details, I did want to go through a little bit of the history. Many people in this room, after listening and talking already with a few of you, know quite a bit about it. Some of you maybe don't know anything about it. So, this is a wonderful rendering that was done by Olson Rug, who was the original developer of this property in 1928. This was out of their catalog, and Olson was founded in the late 1800s. They employed 1,400 people and were the world's largest manufacturer of rugs in this building. What's interesting about this rendering, after you leave tonight and you look back, you're going to say, you know, the building isn't that big. That's actually a rendering with a number of sections showing future additions that actually were never completed. And we found that really, really interesting. As big as this building is, Olson had plans to make it even bigger. They moved out of this building in 1963 and sold it to Marshall Field and Company, who used this building for their distribution warehouse for the entire chain, and stayed in this building until 2008. In 2004, Macy's purchased them and continued through distribution, and then left the building in 2008. And as many of you know, the building sat empty in 2008. Fortunately for the community and for ourselves, they were good stewards of the building. They continue to invest and maintain the building and keep it safe, and we're very appreciative of that, because the building has not fallen in disrepair. The space you're sitting in right now has had no renovation done to it by us. So, this was the condition, and really, the condition of this space is what the entire building looks like. And so, we're very fortunate to start with this wonderful historic shell. Moving on to the future, what are we doing? One of the most visible things that everyone here is going to experience is there's going to be a significant change in the landscaping and greening of the outside of this building. We're going to be creating a mixed-use project that is going to be filled with all different types of businesses. But some of the most visible changes, because the outside is in such wonderful condition, all the windows were replaced in 2000, is going to be quite a bit of landscaping. Here's a few more images of it, just a little bit closer, a little bigger, to really give you an understanding. Now, one of the things that you've probably already heard about is the fact that our first and major tenant of the project is going to be a brand-new grocery store. The door that you walked in when you came in tonight, the entrance to the grocery store will just be around 50 feet over, closer to the middle of the building, and will be actually directly below where we're seated right now. And that's going to be a very large store, 70,000 square feet. We talk in square footage all the time, but to give you a sense, a typical city grocery store is 20,000 or 30,000 square feet. A very large suburban grocery store is 70,000 square feet, and that's what this will be. So, it'll be a full-service, very large grocery store, a very, very significant produce department, meat department, onsite bakery, and they'll be employing over 200 people. And we're very, very excited and proud to have them in the project. We really felt that they were an important asset for the neighborhood and for the other tenants of this project. As you move further down Diversey, what currently is just a blank face to the world is going to be re-energized, and there will be additional retail space that is created along Diversey. One of the most important things about all of this, and one of the first questions that the city of Chicago asked and requested from us, is to understand, when we fill this building up, what kind of impact are we going to have on the neighborhood and on parking? And we understood that, and so, one of the parts of this development that I think are really a key point is we're going to be creating over 700 indoor parking spaces inside the building on the second and third floor of this building. The picture you're looking at is actually directly across the street from Karlov, if you're familiar. As you go from Pulaski, the next street on the south of Diversey is Karlov. We will be installing at actually our cost, a new four-way interchange traffic signal in line with that parking garage, and so, we will be able to maintain the kind of traffic flow that people are used to. Chicago Department of Transportation was very involved in the planning of this project, and a number of changes were made to accommodate suggestions they made to make it better. And so, we're very, very pleased about it. Once you kind of enter into the building, and the space that you walked in when you came in, just to the, past that area where the sign was and just past it, will be the entrance to the office lobby and the live-work units. And this is a rendering of it. We'll be removing some of the slab, creating two-story element, adding glass elevators, bringing in a lot of natural light into the space, actually from the windows that are directly behind you. Those windows will actually be looking down into the first floor, creating a very dramatic space. And with that type of environment, we think we can create something that's exciting and really pleasing to all the companies that come here. And really, what this project is about is creating jobs and success for the city of Chicago and for the 31st Ward. We're really, really fortunate that we've already had a very strong start. As I mentioned, Cermak Fresh Market will be 70,000 square feet. In addition, there's a number of other companies that are already in the project. Newlyweds Foods may be a name that many of you are familiar or not familiar with. Extremely large company, they've got over 500,000 square feet, a few blocks to the south here. They outgrew their facility needed to grow, have taken 100,000 square feet in this project. They're a multi-billion dollar company, employ over 600 people already, and are expanding that. So, we're very, very excited, because one of the hardest things for the city is to maintain manufacturing and those type of jobs. And Newlyweds is very committed. It's a family-owned business, and they're very committed to the 31st Ward, and their expansion here in the project really helped their business grow and obviously was great for the project. As has been mentioned a number of times, Lou Silver is the owner of Studio 41. He also owns Climate Guard Windows, that if we kind of look across a few blocks, Climate Guard is a window manufacturing company. Lou employs 550 people here in the city and continues to grow. He needed additional growth, and that was one of the really driving factors of how we started to look at buying this building. Lou said, you know, I need to grow my business. Where can I grow? And I said, what about the Marshall Fields building? He said, I only need like 100,000 square feet. That's 1.5 million square feet. And the point was that we could accommodate his business growth and also bring a lot more companies to the project. One of the newest tenants, which wasn't part of the original plan when we started looking at this, is an e-commerce company called Deal Genius. They're in 40,000 square feet. If you go on the website when you get home and put in dealgenius.com, they're a daily deal site. They actually do quite a bit of selling through Amazon as well, and they're a growing company, young entrepreneurial firm, and we're excited to have a tech firm as one of the additional tenants here in the project. Really jumping into the real nuts and bolts of what this all means, how it all works, how it all lays out, this was really one of the greatest challenges, and we feel very fortunate that we were able to come up with a plan that allowed us to interlace and integrate all different types of businesses. Many of the developers who looked at this building, starting in 2008, the reason they didn't move forward with it is because most people looked at it and said, well...
You know, there's a manufacturer that's 1.5 million square feet. Macy's already determined, own the building outright, that maintenance is 4.5 million square foot.
... warehouse didn't make great economic sense, and moved 50 miles out of Chicago to a large 850,000 square foot, 32-foot high ceiling warehouse. And so, we needed to come up with solutions that could create a mixed-use development. One of the key aspects of a project like this is not only the synergies between the company, but creating a 24/7 environment. When you're able to do that, you create a very safe, thriving environment. And because of the size of the project and the plans that we have, we're able to create that. And that's something that I think will be very exciting for the entire neighborhood. So, to kind of run through the nuts and bolts of it, I talked about parking, and if you look, the blue areas, which is the second and third floor, are going to be parking. We're building new ramps that actually enter into the corner of the building off of this parking lot. So, this parking lot will have around 70 cars, and then from that, there will be a ramp up to the second floor. So, when you come shopping at Cermak, you'll actually can pull up to the second floor, be indoor heated in the winter, parking, fully secured, and be able to ride elevators down right into the grocery store, do your grocery shopping, take the cart up, go back to your car, load it up, and be able to go home. There will also be entrances, which again, I showed you the rendering, but it'll be on Diversey, which will be an entrance and an exit from the parking at that signalized interchange. Here's where things kind of get interesting. So, in addition to the grocery store and the retail that'll be happening along Diversey is what's happening on the other floors, and that's really one of the greater challenges. So, in the whole project, we're going to have almost 500,000 square feet of warehouse. Of that right now, let me just do the math, almost half of it is already leased. And so, that part of it is underway. That's what the building was built for. It's well-served and works well for. Areas where a significant amount of improvements and construction have to occur is not only making the parking, but also building out 80 live-work units. A live-work unit, which most people are not familiar with, because this will be the first project in the city of Chicago that has this live-work designation for an upper floor. What that means is that somebody can live in the unit and also legally run a small business and have employees at that business. Many people say, well, I know plenty of people who live in an apartment or in a building and run their business out of and have employees. The reality is that you're not able to get business insurance, and from a legal perspective, it's really not how the code is written. Buildings are either zoned for residential or they're zoned for commercial. We worked very close with the Planning Department, and a number of aldermen a few years ago came up with this new zoning, business-live-work. The Planning Department was very excited to try and adapt it to upper-floor space, directed us, were closely with us, to create this product. And what that's going to do is create 80 places where somebody can live, found, and run a small business, and be able to afford that, because one of the challenges many people have is they have an apartment, and if they need to go get a small office, they have to have office rent, and those two become a real burden when you're starting companies. And that's really the intent of the live-work, so there will be 80 of those units. One of the projects that I was directly involved in is the former Montgomery Wards complex, which is on Chicago Avenue and the River. That's 1.6 million square feet. Groupon is headquartered there. I was one of the developers of that product. We filled that with office companies in this same type of space. So, we're very excited about having that. So, that office space will be home to everything from call centers to technology companies to large companies that need back-office-type space and large workstation environment space. The building is extremely well-suited for that. All of that will be new mechanical systems, electric systems, firelife safety systems, along with the new lobby and other elevators. So, we're excited to have that component. The top of the building, because if anybody who has been or worked in this building will know, the very top floor, the sixth floor, has ceilings that are almost double the height of the space that we're standing in. They're 20-foot ceilings, which makes wonderful warehouse space. So, the sixth floor will be additional warehouse space. The back two buildings, which together are almost 170,000 square feet, are traditional warehouse space with 24-foot ceilings, and those are both now leased. So, kind of the whole building put together at 1.5 million square feet, we've been able to come up with a plan with really chunk sizes of 300,000 for office, 150,000 for live-work, 150,000 for retail, and because those sizes are manageable, it's not something that we can't achieve. It's very common in those type of size to fill. You know, with that, I really, we wanted to have this evening to answer questions. So, with that, I'd like to do that and open it up to the floor.
I've got a question. I noticed that you have that Cermak Prove's company, Fresh Market. Can I see a few of them in the neighborhood?
The question was that the Cermak Fresh Market, that the gentleman pointed out that there's a number of Cermaks. There's one west of here at Cicero and Diversey, and he was concerned about the quality of that store. I am not here to make a comment on anybody's business. Anybody owns a business, runs a business knows how tough it is. What I would like to share with all of you is that a number of years ago, the family that owns Cermak Fresh Market sold that facility to one of their former, I believe, employees. There is no financial connection between Cermak Produce, which is on Cicero and Diversey, and Cermak Fresh Market. And it's unfortunate that they were very kind when they sold the business. They said, sure, you can use the name as anybody knows, an ongoing name is important. They didn't require them to change the name over a period of time, and today, the confusion is exactly that. People perceive the Cermak that we will be putting in this building and that Cermak to be similar or the same business. They are totally different businesses, totally different ownership, and the product and the store that will be built here will look and feel very, very similar to a Mariano's. The second part of your question was, did we talk with everybody? We talked with Mariano's, we talked with Tony's, we talked with Pete's, we talked with Whole Foods, we talked with Cermak and the owners of Cermak. I have to share with you that we felt, because as you can imagine, 70,000 square feet is only 5% of this project. This is in many ways the front door of the building. The look, the feel, the quality of this store has a direct bearing and impact on our own personal success. And the commitment and investment that they are making into this store, I really believe that when that store is completed, after seeing the renderings that they have, that it will be the most beautiful grocery store in the city of Chicago. And I'm excited for it to open, and we would, we had the exact same concern. And they have two other stores very similar to this. It's a full-format store. One is in Aurora, one is in Milwaukee, and I actually personally went up to Milwaukee and looked at this store, and I was blown away. So, I personally am not at all concerned about that.
Great. Yes? Can you give us a timeline for the Fresh Market or the Park?
Sure, sure. The question was, can we provide a timeline of what's really going on? So, we are finishing up the permit process with the city right now, as is Cermak Fresh Market. We expect to be starting the construction of the parking garage and the ramps in the next two weeks. Based on the conversation that I had with Cermak, the exact same timeframe is theirs. They expect to have permits in the next couple of weeks, and with that, they will be starting construction of the store. Our collective plan, because we are building the parking, they have to build their own store, is we're very hopeful that we can get all of this completed before the holidays. So, it's ambitious, it's going to count on construction going smoothly, it's not unachievable. Our own construction schedule shows for the parking garage that we can get all the work done by December. At the same time, if Cermak's able to get their store open sooner, even if the parking garage isn't open, we'll have the spaces out in front that would allow them to have a soft opening. The live-work is in the design phase right now and trying to pull together all the plans to be able to go in for permit, to get that going, and that will be one of the next phases. As I mentioned, most of the warehouse space is already leased and occupied. At this point, I have the sixth floor and the fifth floor down here that are available on the sixth floor here. All the other warehouses occupied. We are in conversations with office tenants ranging in size from 20,000 square feet to 250,000 square feet right now. As soon as we secure one of those large tenants, we will go ahead and start the construction and create the office. So, all of this is really coming together very quickly. In terms of total timeframe, without being overly optimistic, it wouldn't shock me that we have a significant part of the project done in the next 24 months. I'll be very disappointed if we're not totally done with everything in the next 36 months.
Question for the alderman of the county commissioner. Given that Alderman's development, assuming that it's going to be affecting homeowners, so how are you going to be working with us to make sure that our property taxes don't add? Well, that's...
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't no indication of a property tax increase. I was on record a few months ago, there was a resolution before the board, and I voted not to increase the property tax. They did ask for a $2 million loan from the county, which, which they received and are in that process. And just to show you, that's what they were talking about, the investment that they're making here, that money, I think, was just to go to buy some hardware, some materials. Most of the money's coming from the developer of their property.
I'd like to add to what the commissioner said. First of all, he mentioned that a $2 million loan, that loan is being made directly to Cermak Fresh Market. Cermak purchased their space, the first floor, the 70,000 square feet, from us. It is a legal PIN, it is their own. Your question of taxes is a very good one. We received a tax abatement for this project, but most importantly, when you look at the numbers, the taxes of the property right now and where the taxes will be when the building is completed, the taxes when completed with the abatement, the taxes will be somewhere between four and 10 times higher than they currently are. And so, the city of Chicago, by our bringing this property and rejuvenating it, is actually going to be receiving a significant increase in taxes that are going to be paid by this property, not a decrease, after the abatement.
Does it have to be a reinvestment of some of that taxes to the city?
This, the, this system is no different than your home. The building currently now has a very low tax assessment because it is empty. As we occupy, the taxes are jumping way, way up. The only thing the tax abatement does is, say the taxes being here, it brings it down to here. The current taxes are all the way down here. Where that tax money goes, goes to the state and to the city, and what they do with our tax dollars is collective. We don't have direction of where those tax dollars go.
And are taxes day one, or is it pushed out a number of years?
Say that again?
Are the taxes day one, once you occupy, or is it pushed out a number of years?
No, the taxes, no different than your home. The buildings get assessed as they get occupied, they get reassessed, and the taxes flow through. So, this isn't an issue of free taxes or no taxes. The reason why we asked for this tax abatement was because the taxes would jump astronomically to the point where tenants wouldn't be able to afford to be in the building. And so, by having this reduction from the full assessment to a reduced assessment helps us get tenants to come into the building. At the same time, the total tax dollars that we will be paying are dramatically higher than the current taxes that the city has been receiving in an empty building.
I think the question is more, forgive me if I'm misunderstanding, but I think the question is more about residential property taxes in this area.
Yeah, again, this project doesn't have a direct impact on your property taxes. It's a commercial building.
But usually, what happens in the neighborhood, which is the moment that there's a redevelopment, it does affect homeowners? So, that's the reason I'm asking if the alderman can, if the county commissioner, if you're going to be working with us.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And that's, that's the whole point of these meetings like this, is to get the input from all, from all the rest of the residents. I will not, you see it too much, I represent all the way from Holden Square to Reese Park, Humble Park to Reese Park. And with that gentrification and with the Bloomingdale Trail, some of that stuff is nice and beautiful, but sometimes it displaces many families, and those property taxes raise. Those are things that we need to work with, with the community, to see what it's for and what they're not against. And I like to know, you use my voice, and I be your voice to come and work with. So, if that's something that you want to work with, and as this continues to get implemented, as people continue to move in the building, I'm sure with the aldermen and with the developers is something that we'll continue to address.
Yes, my question was, was the Cermak Fresh Market the only option for this community? I was wondering, 700 employees to the business, but have we thought about communities, small businesses that have been here for years? And how is going to affect them?
Sure, the question was whether we, other types of retailers. As I mentioned before, we talked with a number of different grocery stores. I think the question is other types of retail. As I mentioned before in the presentation, maybe it wasn't really clear, along Diversey, we have additional retail space that has not yet to be leased, and we are having... we have additional retail space that has not yet to be leased, and we are, haven't actually started talking with the tenants yet, but we will be talking with different types of tenants and companies to move into that retail space. So there will be other types of retail tenants that are coming into this project.
Do you have any idea?
I just don't at this point. We haven't gotten that far where we've started focusing and talking to them.
Following that question, I see that the retail space that you have, it's all based on what I'm following the information there, that it's on the same size, the same square feet. Is there any chance that that's going to change, or is it going to be on the same size? How is it going to be developed?
How's it going to be?
The retail space that you?
Oh, okay. Right now, the question is that the retail space is showing as one space, if you will. We don't know, it would be very unusual for all of that retail space to be one tenant. I believe that it will be multiple tenants. One of the things that isn't really our focus in the neighborhood and up and down Pulaski and Diversey, there's quite a few vacant retail storefronts that are typically around 2,000, 3,000 square feet. Those spaces are well-served for that size. That is not the typical type of size that we're not, that we're looking for. Our space is much deeper than that. So the type of retailers that we'll have in this project will be on the larger size. They'll range in size, I would think, between 4,000 feet and 25,000 square feet. And so it's not that we're after the same part of the market where there's already vacancy, but right now, there's literally no vacancy in this neighborhood. If you need 25,000 square feet, there isn't that space available. And so these will be bigger type of retailers that the neighborhood needs and wants.
Basically, is there anything like a restaurant, is there a variable change in that exception?
You know, I apologize. The question was a restaurant. Actually, in this area, you can imagine, right here, there's a space of 6,000 to 7,000 square feet, which will be next to the office lobby. And our hope and plan is to put a restaurant into that space, which would be an additional amenity, because when the building is totally completed, we think that we could have as many as 1,000 jobs. And to clarify, the woman over there mentioned 700 jobs for the grocery store. The grocery store intends to have around 200 jobs, not 700.
Are all the buildings all the way to the railroad tracks? Is there something coming down?
No. The question is, anything's going to be demoed. We are not demoing any of the building. The project goes from Pulaski all the way to the railroad tracks. That is what you're seeing on the board. All of that is being redeveloped and re-energized, all the way to the railroad tracks.
I got a couple of questions. The first question, are you getting any potential money for this project?
No, we're not.
Yeah, okay. My other question is, what kind of community input did you have to come up with this? How many meetings did you have prior to this? But it seems to me that this is a done deal. And I would like to know what kind of input the community had, because I know from the previous administration in the ward that the community meetings were restricted. So my question to you is, what is the input that the community had for this?
Sure. The way the city of Chicago, this project is under what is called a plan development. And the city of Chicago requires public notice, which we filed. It's on record, you can look it up. We had public meetings, we had meetings with the city, we had meetings with the people at the county, with the state representatives, and we had numerous meetings regarding all aspects of this plan. During the election, Alderman Santiago was, pointed out the fact that the previous administration really wasn't as open to extensive community meetings. And we understand that. One of the first things that she raised immediately with us was the fact that it wasn't, that there weren't as many, and there wasn't as much input from the community as she at least would have liked to see. And we immediately said, Alderman, we will host and have this immediately. We're happy to do it. We've always been happy to do it, and we're excited to share with all of you. And as you can see from this plan, there's really nothing to hide and something that's a very logical plan. So, you know, I don't know if that exactly answers the question.
The question you answered, that you had meetings with the city, with the county, but no community meetings?
No, we did have a community meeting.
And there's a big project going on just east of here, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, the Mega Mall project?
I've, I've heard of it, but it has nothing to do with us.
And Alderman has had many, many community meetings and inputs for that project. I believe that this is a done deal. You're making a presentation where they get, getting an input from the community.
I appreciate the question. I can't comment on another development I really don't know anything about. We're very excited to be here. We're very interested in working with the community and understanding and trying to satisfy. We had numerous meetings in trying to get input and satisfy the needs from the city's perspective and through the guidelines that they have to achieve this, and we're glad to be here today.
Do you need to, um, can you, um, make, um, space, because it's sort of retail, you might have anything?
That's a good question.
Are there also, do we have a number of grocery stores? Maybe a 70,000-foot community in your heart?
Okay. The question was community space. The city of Chicago, as we all are very familiar, has a very extensive park system as well as public library system and school system. This is a private development, and our goal here is to bring jobs and to create new businesses, and we are not really in the community-building business. That's something that government does, it's something that the park system does and the school system, as well as the library system. Yes, sir? I'm sorry, the buzzing, I guess.
That rules out, that's waterfall. Oh, he wants you to put the waterfall back.
I see, okay, okay. The question was, there used to be a waterfall here. The waterfall was built during the Great Depression, and instead of firing everybody, the Olsons put them to work and had them build a waterfall. Fortunately and hopefully, we won't have that happen, and so we're really going to be focused on bringing jobs and business to it.
Jobs are building waterfalls.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Will you be using solar power at all to power buildings?
The question about solar power, we're actually investigating it right now, and because of the large rough area that we have, we have the space to do solar. Right now, the federal government and the state has been changing their incentives. One of the challenges about solar, unfortunately, is that without the, our American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, solar, if you look at the numbers, is not economically viable. With the incentives, they are potentially viable, and we're exploring it, and it's something we would love to do.
Yeah, well, can you explain to us a little bit about the work living space? Because I want to know if you guys consider any kind of housing or any kind of condo complex? Because this is new to me even, work living. How much is a square foot of that work living space?
Sure.
You're trying to put a business and an apartment in one? I'm not familiar with that.
And understandably, and the question is really explaining live-work a little further. I'd be happy to. The planning department and the city of Chicago officials really, really were very focused when we met with them about job creation. The number of times that that came up was consistent from the first day. And in response to that, we knew that this project would be a great residential project as many buildings in the area have been converted and old warehouses converted into residential. We saw an opportunity with this building to create something that achieved both goals, which is a place to live and a place to work. In order to achieve that, it's, this product is going to be much larger units than typical. The smallest unit in the building is going to be around 850 square feet. The largest unit is over 2,000 square feet.
What's the grocery store to be at?
The grocery store is 70,000 square feet, and there will be 80 units. So the live-work, as you can see up on this chart, will occupy 137,000 square feet, almost double the size of the grocery store, and it'll be 80 units. Those will be leased, they're not for sale, they're going, it'll be similar to an office building or an apartment building where you have a lease, similar to an apartment building where they're one-year leases. Typical office buildings are three- or five-year leases. And one of the reasons why that's interesting is because if somebody moves in and they're growing and needs to expand, they have that flexibility, whereas the traditional office building, you're signing a long-term commitment, your business grows. In addition to the live-work units, actually in the space we're standing in, there will be a number of areas that are flex space. If you're familiar with WeWork, 1871 at the Merchandise Mart, these are coworking spaces is what they're called. And people will show up in the morning, and they're maybe working at a table or a workstation, and be able to work and interact with other people in business community, learn for each other, work from each other. Somebody, maybe a web designer, will help somebody else doing an app and work together. So there will be a section of this area that will have that, that will help facilitate the growth of these live-work units.
So you guys never considered housing?
We did. And, and to be very frank, the city really was, at that time, more interested in us focusing on live-work as opposed to straight residential.